Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be providing interpreting services in Spanish this afternoon, and I'm going to make a brief announcement in Spanish. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Yo voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete para esta tarde. Si alguien necesita servicios de intérprete puede pasar hacia la parte de atrás, puede pasar a buscar al señor Nick, y él va a estar providing los audífonos para que puedan escuchar la interpretación en español. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, citizens' comments. Elizabeth Mann. Oh, roll call. Oops.
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilwoman Guevara.
Here.
Councilwoman Mendoza.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastore.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark. Vice Mayor Waring.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Okay, we will... Elizabeth Mann, would you like to come down and have three minutes? Don't look at me, I didn't do it.
Dear Mayor, dear council members, councilwoman, I, Elizabeth Mann, resident of Phoenix since 1987, in view of City's Phoenix-continued ignorance of its own public art program on Chinese Cultural Center, hereby respectfully submit a citizen petition to the City of Phoenix to request investigation and decision on the following: One, confirming Chinese Cultural Center is a City Public Art Program with the documents I'm now submitting in spite of fact the City Public Art Department continue to claim on no existence of the file and records. Two, making executive decision on how to preserve its public art program and not allow anyone or any reason to eliminate any public art program under any excuses to truly preserve the art and the culture of this young city and diversified city and for the benefit for all its residents. It is very sad to see that due to the city negligence and its effort to enforce their own public art program and we have what's happening just recently, since Monday or Saturday. And I'm not going to speak a lot of times on this, but I know we are a young city. We do make mistakes. We're here to correct the mistakes. I'm willing to help the city to collect all those files in my hands, which I have here. This much file, 1988 file, 1996 file, City wrote letter to me, my person, my name, declared a public art program. And the beautiful public art are beautiful to City and confirmed by the City in 2001 and also under oath by confirmed by City ex-planning director and say the Chinese Cultural Center is iconic roof and park are public art program. So I'm here, have 11 attachments to save the time. I really hope the City would help preserve this. This is an education center for future, for the City residents, for the multicultural city and the Chinese Cultural Center built by me. I'm the founder and I'm the president managing director of the company I created personally since 1991. When I retired from that company in 2008, Chinese Cultural Center paid $55 million. You can go to records, in property tax, sales revenue, and 164 jobs. Please do not eliminate this retail wholesale and combined commercial building. And for the sake of Phoenix, and you don't have to create another public art program. You have a developer who did it without one penny for the city, excepted two officers went to China with me, got the 30 artisans coming to here to help me build this. It is very sad the police the other day, yesterday, Monday, when I was there, are not helping the people. The shop owners cannot get inside there and threatened to arrest us, including me. I was very surprised. So, but I hope we're here and to correct the mistake. And I wrote some of the council people, and I worked with many people. I worked with Cody Williams. I worked with Saudi CCO. I worked with Michael Johnson, many other people. But I'm a very private person. Usually I don't speak publicly. But I hope together, let's resolve it. I got an offer on table, 16 million. Let the developer take $5 million profit in one year. He made 1 million. And with is qualified buyer and will buy as is. Let's work it out for the benefits for the community. Let's resume the harmony. Thank you very much.
I have three days no sleep already since True North demolished Chinese Cultural Center on the last week, on Saturday, October 13. I am here to ask you to do some job. Please do something to protect this popular art, protect Phoenix, protect Chinese Cultural Center. Start long and help the weak. Here I have 30-second video from YouTube. Somebody put a YouTube. It's an American couple. Someone put a YouTube there.
This is what they do to beautiful Chinese Cultural Center. They're demolishing the roof. They don't care. They're going against the Chinese people. They want to destroy something beautiful, something that's gorgeous. Just for the sake of anger. This is what they do when they're angered. They destroy something beautiful. But don't worry, their days are coming. Their days are coming. See the clouds above hovering over what shouldn't be done? This is truly sad.
They are... They are American. We are Chinese. Some Americans love Chinese culture more than us. Why? Because they're really beautiful, very amazing building in Phoenix, you know? Anyway, I have three days no sleep since Chinese Cultural Center, True North demolished. I'm so sad. Not because I'm Chinese. There is Chinese Cultural Center I'm sad because it's a beautiful building in Phoenix. I'm sad because I live in Phoenix. I love this country. I love you guys. Please help. Thank you so much. And here is the photos.
Thank you.
Everyone, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here. I really support I'm standing here today. But this happened. I'm coming from a Chinese Cultural Center. I have a store in the Chinese Cultural Center until now, 13 years already. Open business every day. I'm paid a tax. I am pay the rent no any time for late. But until right now, it's October 13. I'm come back to open my store and then scaring me, closing my door. The fan blocking my business. I cannot go in. But I'm finding the managers, the owner. And they tell me and then fix the floor. But the floor to fix it, we pick. Never have the note from us tell us what happened to fix. And then right now, until now, I still cannot open my store. And then they say lie to tell the police. Then I can't stand my store, the fan. And then they say, my lease is gone. I don't have a lease. What happened? And then I call my lawyer and said before, because you know, I have the lease. Fortunately, I have a lease in my lawyer. And then I urgent call them and then send me on the phone the lease. I saw the police. The police said, oh, you have. You still have 1 yen and 7 mon. Now, I don't know, until now, still closing my door. I cannot open. Hope everybody handling this, help my case. I just say like that. Thank you, everybody.
What is the name of your business, ma'am?
Healthy Chinese Herbal Company.
It's called what?
Healthy Chinese Herbal Company. Oprah, yes.
What is it? I can't hear. I'm sorry, I'm old.
Oprah is Chinese herbal supplement.
Okay.
Healthy Chinese Herbal Company.
Oh, healthy. I got it. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chuck E. has a doctor appointment this afternoon. So I'm here to read a citizen petition he prepared to the mayor and the city council of Phoenix, where as the Chinese Cultural Center and the Garden has been an invaluable asset to the City of Phoenix for decades, but has now been threatened with disfigurement and elimination since July 2017 due to the expressed intention of True North, 668 David Tesco. Whereas the entire site, as master plan, the community was required to comply in 1996 and again in 2001 as development improvements were to be zoned properly with then existing public art requirements. Whereas in a recent debate of candidates for mayor of Phoenix saw a question posted to them as to whether or not they would properly support a public art requirement for development, phrased in such a manner as to imply this would be a new or different requirement. Whereas it's vital to the vibrant and valuable developments of any and all areas within our city that the public art should be an integral and required element. Whereas the entire Chinese-American community in metropolitan physics, Phoenix, is deeply interested as a cultural minority with an ancient and yet living cultural and artistic tradition leading to our deep and lasting commitment to the Chinese Cultural Center and the Garden. Whereas attached here to is ample document of the public art elements for the site over the years and from different perspective in the current context of Walton and surely illegal destruction of a extensive area of the iconic tile roofing undertaken since October 13 in violation of a reasonable agreement reached for leak repairs only. Therefore, pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 22 of the Phoenix City Charter, I, Chuck E., as a citizen and resident of the City of Phoenix, a petition to the city council is herewith submitted regarding the following points of extreme urgency. One, is there still a public art element required for all development in the City of Phoenix? Or has there been any revision, reduction, or removal thereof?
I need you to wrap up, please.
Two, will the developer-owner of the site of the Phoenix Chinese Cultural Center and Garden be held liable and responsible for any such requirement of the past in the zoning and for any future activities?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and thank you to all my fellow veterans, those especially who are serving around the world right now because of them and civil rights activists and human rights activists. I am here and able to speak with you because in many countries, we don't have that choice. I plead with our beautiful Chinese-American brothers and sisters of the beautiful Chinese-American community for the Chinese Cultural Center. I realize you as the leaders say that your hands are tied due to what certain individuals in the state legislature have passed in regards to what they say is private property. But I still would ask you as the moral leaders and the elected leaders of our city to reach out to developers. I've just heard these two petitions. I'm hoping you will seriously consider them. There is apparently enough funding on the table to try to convince the developer. We've already heard of business owners being turned out of their business shops. I ask you, you know, even though we do not have three co-equal branches of government anymore because as we all know, the state Supreme Court's judges have been stacked by the governor, I still ask you to do what is right. Will it help your political career? No, it probably won't help your political career. But there was a man named John F. Kennedy who wrote Profiles in Courage. And you know what? Sometimes you do things like Abraham Lincoln. You vote against the Mexican-American war. You lose your seat because it's not popular. This may not be the popular thing to do, but this is the right thing to do. We've had all of this go on in American history, in L.A., the massacres of our Chinese-American brothers and sisters. And now this beautiful Chinese-American center, I watch on Twitter today as they just take these objects, which are very dear, near and dear to their hearts, off the roof and toss them into the garbage. I don't think that's what Arizona is about. I don't think that's what America is about. And I sure as heck don't think it's what Phoenix is about. So I'm asking you, besides just sitting there saying, "Sorry, Leonard, there's nothing we can do." There is something you can do. You have the power of the bully pulpit, whether you want to admit it or not. You know that I like each and every one of you. It doesn't matter to you. But I will not be angry at you, but I will be very sad if you cannot do something about this. So I ask you to please do something. Stand up. Do something is right for another part of our culture, our beautiful Chinese-American community. Stand up for the Chinese Cultural Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I believe our time is... Go ahead.
May I add something too? The lady that owns the Chinese Herbal Company, it's a terrible story, I mean, but it is a landlord-tenant issue. I don't know if she's still here or not. But could I get her name and contact? I've already reached out to the owner of the property. I just... I know it's not on the agenda, but I can just let her know. I've already reached out to the property owner, one of their representatives, to see what the situation was and if they'd be willing to meet with you and figure out what occurred there. I feel bad for you. That's a business that you've obviously started. It's your American dream. And for anyone, I mean, that's just an important thing. So from my end of it, I know we can't do much, Mrs. Mann, on what your issue is legally. We just can't. And we're not going to do something that's going to break the law either. But at the end of the day, we can probably help with something like this. So from your end, ma'am, if you could make sure I've got all your information here, your phone number, everything, and I'll let you know what comes out of that, okay? But I've already reached out.
Give the information off her card right now.
Do you have everything? Oh, if you can just get it to my office, that'll be fine. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. I believe our time is up on that. I'm waiting till she gets up and walks off and then ask her to read the 24-hour paragraph. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G6515 through 6517, 45047 through 45070, and resolutions 21682 through 21685.
Thank you. Next item, I believe, Councilwoman Stark. You have reviewed the minutes of the special meeting of August 21st.
I have, and I move to approve.
Do I have a second? Motion and second, all in favor, please say aye. Pose, motion carries. Vice Mayor, would you like to do boards and commissions?
Sure. Move to approve Mayor and Council boards and commission nominations except for Maria Bachwin from Radio Campesina and Danny Ortega from the Ortega Law Group who are being appointed to the Phoenix 2020 Census Complete Count Committee.
Okay.
Second? Um, you have a second. Okay, second.
Yeah, we do.
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Is Councilman... He's not on the phone, so you could go ahead and make the second.
Oh, okay. Motion to approve Maria Bachwin from Radio Campesina and Danny Ortega from Ortega Law Group to the Phoenix 2020 Census Complete Count Committee.
Okay. And the reason they were separated is Councilman Noakowski needed to declare conflict on those two. But since he's not here, we're going to vote as a package. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. If they would join me right down here, and we will swear you in. If you would raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
I, Susan.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of... According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations, you are official.
Either one works, or Jim. Next on the agenda is the administration of the oath of office for Judge Tina Solomon for a term expiring on June 29, 2022; Judge Anna M. Sanchez for a term expiring December 19, 2021; Judge Thomas Parscandola for a term expiring on December 19, 2021.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
I didn't want to overstep, Mayor.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
I, Hannah Sanchez.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office, the innocent court judge.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations and thank you so much for what you do.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor? I have an update too. What's the lady's name from the...
Ask me the hard question.
I can't remember. I'm terrible on this whole thing. Ma'am, if you can get her attention, Marissa? Let her know that she can go back... Ma'am? You can go back into your business today. So it should be open by the end of the day today.
Good work, Councilman.
Pardon me?
Good work.
It's amazing what this thing does. It's not me, it's this.
All right. I believe we are now to liquor licenses.
All right. Move to approve items 4 through 37, excluding item 16, and noting that item 37 has requested be continued by the applicant to November 7, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Councilman Noakowski, I believe, is on the phone now. Okay. Opposed? Bearing none? It's unanimous in favor. Item 16, Councilwoman.
So the reason why I pulled item 16 is because I received three protest letters for the applicant or the application. And here are the reasons why I pulled it. And I'll probably just wait till everybody gets out.
Could you just wait until they leave? It's a little noisy.
They're hugging the judges.
Okay. Do you want to continue?
Yes. So this is an application for a location and ownership transfer of a Series 6 for a Series 6 license for a bar. This location has previously been licensed for a Series 12. Am I correct, Denise? Okay. And which was a restaurant liquor license. The proposed application does not propose to have outdoor dining or outdoor alcohol consumption. The location is missing a use permit for the bar within 300 feet of the residential zone and for patron dancing and a certificate of occupancy. Okay. The use permit and certificate of occupancies process are handled by the planning and development. The applicant has been notified that they must apply for and obtain the use permit and their certificate of occupancies prior to the beginning of operations. My understanding is that you received also the protest letter and that staff reviewed it but are still recommending to move forward.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastore? Yes, we did receive one letter of opposition during the comment period. And after reviewing that one letter from a local resident, staff is recommending approval currently.
Okay. And if they're approved for the license, they cannot even begin or start because they still have to go through the process of occupancy and permit and everything else.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, they still require that to open and operate from a city perspective. So they could end up with a liquor license in their hand issued by the state, but they still need to comply with city codes and laws related to use permit and certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion, and I just move for no recommendation.
Do I have a second? Roll call?
DeCecio? Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. That's unanimous vote. Takes us to ordinances, resolution, new business, and planning and zoning. Vice Mayor, are you ready?
I am. Move to approve items 38 to 87, noting that items 39, 42, 46, 47, 52, 58, 59, 60, 61, 64, and 66 are being held out. Item 41 has been withdrawn. And items 54, 58... Excuse me. Item 54 has been corrected. I guess 58 and 64 will correct when we make those individual motions.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you do a second on that... Before you do a second on that, some of us were expressed concern already to the city manager about withdrawing item fifty-four. That should have just came up as a vote yes or no and get that off our plate one way or the other. I think it's just time to do that.
I think you mean forty-one.
Forty-one, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Fifty-four.
Oh.
They're close.
Oh, my gosh. Am I even here?
Missed it by that much.
So, I mean, a couple of us just would just like to vote this thing up and go get a letter on it tomorrow, Ed. Thank you.
I also wanted to say something about that. I was going to wait till after there was a second, right?
Second.
Now I'd like to talk about this motion. So, to item forty-one, which is the League of Cities and Towns. This has been an issue I've cared about for quite some time. I'm extremely displeased that this is being pulled off. The only reason this would be pulled off is because it doesn't have the vote. I personally wouldn't know whether it does or doesn't, but it was on the agenda and I expected to vote on it today. Obviously, the implication since we're not voting is that it would fail. That is a unilateral decision that city manager has a right to make, but here's my issue. This is nothing new. It's not like we just found out we're going to join the League of Cities and Towns and maybe we need to do more research on it. This is something that we do year after year. I personally think it's not a productive use of taxpayer money. It's a hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, about the cost of one police officer. We always talk about where are we going to get this money for police officers and so forth? Well, I just found one for you. Because I can tell you, if you're a citizen watching this at home and you think you're getting your money's worth from the League of Cities and Towns, I can assure you that's not the case. You would get a lot more bang for your buck if we had at least one more officer out on the street or pretty much anything else with that hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. So I'm disappointed we're not voting on this today. I think the way this is handled, again, doesn't make a lot of sense to me since I don't know how long the city has been in the league, but it's not like this is some new thing. This isn't something we need to do more research on. This is something that everybody knows what this is. The two new members were staffers for years. They know what the league is, what it does. It's either good or it's not. If it can't pass on its own merits today, why the heck are we even thinking about being in it? Doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. So, I just want to be clear. So it's a three-person letter or a four-person letter to put this on the November 7th agenda? So, at least theoretically, the people who apparently would be against it now, I don't know. But I am certainly willing to go out and get three people, including myself, to sign a letter to put this on the agenda. And that's what we need. It's a three-person letter. Okay, and it'll be on the agenda November 7th. And then, if it fails, that's it. We're not a member of the league. What happens in this interim, because I assume we are doing this today, we're going to do this today because there's some sort of deadline for membership. What is the deadline? How do they get paid in this interim?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, Vice Mayor Waring. This is actually authorization to write a check to the league. So in some years, we have actually not paid the league until the following year. So this, there is no deadline per se, hard and fast for paying the league dues. So that's not at issue in this.
I would simply, Mayor, say this. We should either have our own lobbying team. I'm against it, as you guys know, or we should be a member of the league. But both of those things, I guess I just wonder why. Pick one and save taxpayers some money. Because doing both just doesn't make any sense to me at all. I should know. I've been lobbied by them. They're nice folks. But for small cities banding together, maybe that makes sense for them. What does Phoenix need it for? We've got a one point two billion dollar budget. We're spending, I don't know how much, on lobbyists. I'm not even sure I want to know. It's just depressing. So, that's all I have to say about this, Mayor. I guess we'll talk about this in another couple of weeks.
Mayor, may I?
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. And just, this goes on every year. And because it's always controversial, just do it. Just get it up or down. Let it happen, one way or the other. They contacted me last year. We finally got it on an agenda. And, I mean, it just, it really needs to be off our plate, one way or the other. And it's fair. It's, and granted, it would be very controversial if we did leave the league. I get it. First ever do that. But at the end of the day, it also shows a level of dissatisfaction from multiple people. And it is, I believe, to be pretty bipartisan, quite frankly. But, again, last year, when they contacted me, it took me two months to get it on an agenda. Two months. And they had mayors calling me from all over saying, can you help us get it on the agenda? We did, finally. It passed, but at the end of the day, it just needs to either go up or down at this point. And we've got to quit messing with this thing, quite frankly.
Aye, square.
I would also argue that this isn't the first time it's potentially failed. It actually did fail. Sal, remember, some of you guys weren't here. But in 2012, I think it was, it failed. Tom Simplot voted no and then changed his mind a few weeks later. So it's not that changes don't happen, but we only have an eight-person crew now. So it's a little bit different. I would also argue, for those who watch these meetings, consolidated elections, an issue that's near and dear to my heart. The league was out doing polling and so forth. Again, some of you who are here would remember that. Didn't want to share it with us. A friend of mine found out about it. He couldn't get a copy because they didn't want to have copies. We're basically paying dues. They were doing information that they didn't want to share with council members, like me. It was absolutely appalling. Now, what their polling found out was people really like consolidated elections. And they didn't want to share this with us because I guess they didn't want us to change our positions. Well, it turns out they did like it, voters, because we just put it on a ballot. It passed with seventy-four percent of the vote. I have an issue with an organization that was doing polling and they knew how popular that was. And they tried to hide that information from us. For those of you who think I'm overstating or this is some big conspiracy theory, go watch the meeting when that happened. I think that was a 2012 item, when Sal was pushing a bill down at the legislature about this. That's kind of an issue, which might be why they're struggling, since people do tend to have long memories, to vote for them now. And to give them more taxpayer dollars so I guess they can go off and do secret stuff that they're not even going to, they're not even going to share with your representatives, much less you. So, just food for thought when this vote comes up in a couple of weeks.
We have a second, correct? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara? Mendoza? Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Item thirty-nine?
Alliance for Innovation. I move item thirty-nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Bearing none, roll call.
DeCecio? Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Item, oh, sorry. Item number forty-two?
Yes.
Move item number forty-two? Second.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Uh, Mayor? I made an error on thirty-nine. I was supposed to be a no on that. I apologize. I know Michael knew. He caught me on that one. That's why I was looking at it. We could either do it today or I can ask for reconsideration. It's your call.
Would you like to reconsider the item?
I would like to. Sorry about that.
Have a second?
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
Roll call for reconsideration, please.
I know, you almost got me on that one, Michael. But thank you for the heads up.
Oh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item is back on the floor. Do I have a motion?
Move item number thirty-nine.
Do I have a second?
Is there a second?
We have a second? Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Noakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Now, I almost voted yes. No.
Okay, it passes six to two.
All right, you ready? Item number forty-two, move forward. Do we have a second? Deb?
We do have a second.
Okay, we have a second.
Okay. Pardon me? Oh, Lyndon Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I have family and friends that live out in the West Valley. The reason I'm bringing that up is Maricopa Association of Governments. I'm supporting that you continue to work with them. But I know that I have friends who can get on bus, light rail, and they can go all the way to Mesa as they will be doing to see the individual who's in the White House right now. But in the West Valley, we're very hard pressed there. I have friends who can't get to medical doctors' appointments. What's going on with the West Valley? Can you please address Maricopa Association of Governments? For all of our, you know, they may not live in Phoenix, but they're our family, they're our friends. They live in the Far West Valley. No, we shouldn't foot the bill, but we do need to work together so we have transportation out to the Far West Valley. They can do it in Mesa. Why not in El Mirage? Why not in Surprise? Please work with them on that. And I strongly support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Seven to one, please. It passed. Next item is?
An item forty-six. I would like to move item forty-six.
Have a motion. Substitute motion. And that's a motion to direct staff to reissue the RFP for the public communications email system.
Second.
Okay, that's the substitute motion. We have and a second? Councilwoman?
Can I have a dialogue about the listserv? Or at what point do I have it? On the second or on the first, or what?
You, the substitute motion, Mayor, members of council, the substitute motion's on the floor. So yes, dialogue on the entire issue of this listserv procurement is on the floor.
Did you want to make comments now?
Okay. I don't know. Do we want to vote on it? Or, I mean, I want to discuss the, the motion, or the second motion, at least.
Well, now, I believe it's the time to do it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
So, Tony, can you give me some background about item forty-six?
Yes, Mayor, and councilmembers and Councilwoman Pastor. Listserv is basically, it's an email system where you can reach out to hundreds and hundreds of residents and businesses at the same time. The city's current system is more than twenty years old. So IT last year went through an RFP process to replace the system. What happened after the RFP process is we came to council, received approval in March of this year. But the company that we received approval to work with is called Figleaf. They let IT know that they would not be able to implement the program. They went through management change and ownership change. The product is called HubSpot. And HubSpot, HubSpot had partnered with Figleaf. So HubSpot said to IT, we can implement the product for you. So that's the item before you today, is asking your approval to use HubSpot to implement the product.
But the motion in front of you is a substitute motion to go out for a rebet, I believe.
And I understand, yes, Mayor, and Councilwoman Mendoza, I understand your motion to be, to ask staff to reissue the RFP and then come back to council at a future date with another recommendation. It could be the same company, it could be a different company.
That is correct. Thank you.
And for the councilmember's awareness, it would be about a six-month process.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking this is because I work very closely on the eleventh floor. I also work very closely with some of your chief of staffs and some of your staff members. And so I often hear about the listserv, many complaints. And probably two of my colleagues sitting here understand what the complaints are of the listserv. Drives my class, I mean, my staff crazy because it's so outdated and clunky and you can't do anything. I have asked for a list of issues. D three. Cannot log into the system. Have to do it in Word and then go to a, no, have to do it on my computer, then convert it to Word, then have to go to another computer in order for it to work. It's about a six-hour process. Can't code pictures to add to stories, which is another process. Can only work on Chrome. Cannot get fonts or font size to work. Must go into HTML program and write HTML coding, which they're learning how to code in an HTML format. It takes about thirty minutes for even a paragraph to be placed into this or written. And cannot store newsletters. Cannot have multiple users use it. And then I understand that in another council district, they have purchased another program in order to do their newsletter. I also understand that it's taken nine years to get to this point. And that staff has spent quite a bit of time getting trained on the new listserv that currently, they were all excited about moving forward and going forward. So, I understand in taking another time for six months, but I just want to let you know what the challenges are with this listserv and how efficient I would like my office to run and not spend as much time and, really, weeks sometimes to get a newsletter out that I require every two weeks. So, those are my frustrations and I'm speaking for some of the employees that are very, very frustrated with this. So, that are my thoughts.
Mayor?
Comments?
Councilwoman Mendoza?
I agree with Councilwoman Pastor. It is very challenging and frustrating. However, the reason we have RFPs is to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And HubSpot did not officially submit an RFP. Is that correct, Tony?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Mendoza, that is correct. HubSpot is, they partnered with the company that we awarded to, and that company is called Figleaf. But then when IT started to negotiate with Figleaf, they changed ownership, changed management, and said they would no longer be able to implement the product. So HubSpot said to the city, we'll assist you here and we'll, we'll implement the product for the city.
Right. So, we have a process and I feel like we need to follow that process. That's the reason why we have this RFP process. If we're not going to, if we're just going to choose a company, then why are we even having an RFP process? I, I just, but I do agree, we do need it, but we need to follow the process. And I don't, I don't agree that we just give it to a company just because they can do the work but never officially filed for the RFP.
Mayor?
Brad? How can we legally award this in the sense of the concerns that Councilwoman Mendoza has brought up? I mean, because staff is recommending to move forward with this. It kind of reminds me of a transportation piece in the sense of you have all, you have this one main sub-company and then you have all these subcontractors or sub-companies. So, how is this legally? Can we move forward?
So, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, as I understand it, there were a number of proposers on this contract. But five of them submitted proposals that didn't qualify for one reason or another. Or at least, there were only two that were advanced to the shortlist. Those two included HubSpot and one other. At the last minute, the second one was disqualified because of some lack of required functionality of their software. So that left only the Figleaf proposal. The way we could do it legally, under the circumstances, would be to acknowledge that what Figleaf proposed was the HubSpot application to begin with. That's all they proposed. And they were really just kind of the project management to get it installed and trained. And so in a sense, it has been competitively procured at this point. And I, I think that that meets the spirit of the RFP requirements. But an argument certainly could be made that it doesn't meet the letter of the RFP requirements and therefore, a reproachment is not an inappropriate way to deal with it at this point.
So, either way, we're right either way.
You could, you could elect either position. That's right.
Okay.
Councilman, this is you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Mendoza and Pastor for bringing that up. I mean, if you look at this, I mean, I'm one, I think I'm the individual that just went ahead and did it myself. So, I mean, this total contract's like one point four million dollars, something like that, by the time with this extension here, this five-year extension. And just a thought to my colleagues, I probably should have shared this a while back. For a couple of grand, you can do it yourself and be a lot more effective than spending one point four million on this thing. Yeah, Mrs. Williams does the same thing. Why not just do it yourself? And I would just dump this whole thing altogether personally and never use their system. Just do it yourself for a couple of grand, literally. That's about what we paid out of my office to do this thing. And I think we have a pretty effective social media presence, including, what, two hundred and some thousand on our email list that we're able to send out, like, within thirteen seconds at the most. They all are delivered. So, I'm, from your token, if you want to go ahead and do it yourself, you can, I paid for it personally, but I don't think there's a problem with using it out of the budget. of the budget, uh, your council budget. For a couple grand, literally, you can save one point four million dollars, and do it yourself.
Just, just to note, it's, it's seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand now, but you also had a seven hundred eleven, if I remember, seven hundred eleven thousand was done just a few months ago.
Councilman, that's a good point. It might be confusing as it's written, it's actually seven hundred thousand replaces, the previous contract request was seven eleven, this would be for seven hundred, so that would stand alone.
Well...
Your point, I think, is still the same.
Again, I'm getting old, my memory is fading, but either way, for seven hundred grand, might as well say that you, just for, literally do it yourself, get rid of the system, don't even mess with it anymore. Why mess with something that doesn't work, and they can never figure out how to make it work?
Do we have any more comments? We need roll call on the substitute motion.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes, unanimous. But could we possibly take fifty-eight out of order?
Fifty-eight?
I need to leave pretty soon, so... Oh. Could you make the motion to take it out of order?
I am making the motion to take the item fifty-eight out of order.
I have a motion and a second. We, roll, do I need roll call? No, boys, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously. Item fifty-eight. Do I have a motion?
I move item fifty-eight.
I have a substitute motion.
Okay.
Be a second.
Oh.
Or... Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Councilwoman?
Substitute motion. To approve the final option to extend a professional service agreement with Moler Alvarez, but with the additional stipulation that an RFP can be issued and procure concurrently by city staff.
Do I have a second?
So it's to, the motion is to continue the, to continue the, the contract, and concurrently set an RFP, do an RFP? Okay. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes, seven to one. And with that, I'm turning the gavel over to you, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Can I have a motion on item forty-seven?
I move item forty-seven.
We have one card, Leonard Clark.
Wait a second, Waring's in charge, prepare for some fireworks here.
No.
No, you got all the mellow stuff left.
She wouldn't have left if I didn't.
Thank you, mayor Waring. My name is Leonard Clark, and I really appreciate your letting me speak. I strongly support what you're gonna do with the corporation named Honeywell. This is part of our legacy, this is going on around the country, and you as our city leaders, helping to monitor the toxic plume that many real estate agents have to disclose when they're selling homes in the city of Phoenix, doing the fact that many of our wells have been capped off to poisoning from corporations and insecticides, all these things over the years. I'm very glad that you will hopefully approve this lease with Honeywell to monitor the drinking water, but I would ask that you check into the EPA's main site, on the Superfund site, and I would ask all of our fellow citizens to keep a very strong eye on what goes on with the water we're drinking, because you've all been concerned about the water and how much we will have to drink. So this is a very good thing you're doing. I'm just glad that Honeywell, years and years ago, decided to comply with the, the courts and other leaders, and monitor our groundwater, which again, many of our wells are capped in the city of Phoenix, as in many other cities across this state and country, because they've been contaminated due to greed of people making a profit. Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring.
Yes, passes six to nothing. Can I have a motion on fifty-two?
Move item fifty-two.
Second. Do I have a card? Thank you. Surprise, surprise, Leonard Clark, come on down.
Thank you, mayor Waring. My name is Leonard Clark, and you know that I respect all of your opinions, you have, you know, your conscience, what you, you do. I respect our law enforcement, even though sometimes I believe we need, you know, monitoring and all these things. I'm concerned about this because I see a lot of, uh, this combining of homeland security with police, now we have cameras. True, you can say, Leonard, Mr. Clark, stop right there, they're only gonna use those cameras to go after the bad guys. Don't worry about your Fourth Amendment right to privacy under the United States Constitution, the Phoenix Police Department will not spy on you, Mr. Clark, no. These cameras will only be used to catch the bank robbers and the bad guys. So I'm against this proposal until I can see some safeguards, and I'm not even a libertarian, for crying out loud, I'm a tree-hugging liberal, but approving more surveillance cameras to spy on our citizens, I just can't go along with that. And of course, I highly appreciate what our officers do, they put their lives on the line, they've given their lives, but there's a militarization going on in this post-Patriot Act world of ours, so please, vote no. We don't need any more cameras to spy on our citizens, they will tell you it's only to spy on the bad guys. We need assurances, in the Army, they said, in God we trust, all others sign here, I think that is the case here, thank you.
Thank you, any discussion? Yes. Laura.
Chief Kurtenbach, can you explain the need and the purpose of one-time purchase of surveillance cameras and supporting equipment?
Vice mayor Waring, councilwoman Pastor, yes, as you are all keenly aware, the police department uses a number of covert and overt surveillance methods in accordance with the law. What this item specifically would allow us to do is purchase cameras that would be used in the public domain, filling, filming activity in the public domain in the furtherance of felony investigations. So in other words, this isn't meant to be a tool that is filming in backyards, and it won't be a tool as such. It will film activity to further our investigations in places where the public is at.
Mayor, may I ask a question too?
Yes.
So I've been very supportive of this, but I'm, I'm more libertarian-based than anyone, I think, could imagine, but at the end of the day, the city of Phoenix was also videotaping people at football games and public events and things like that where there was no felony going on. Does this do that? I should have asked that question earlier, Mike. If it does that, I'm a no.
Simply stated, the answer is no, it does not do that.
Okay, so this is only the filming of, and I think people need to be aware of this, we were out filming people at football games, public events, infringing on people's, I think, rights to enjoy a game, but also on their freedom of speech, that's what the city of Phoenix does sometimes. It's a real problem, I brought this up several years ago, and my understanding is that this is only when we expect a felony or something like that to occur, a crime to occur, correct?
Vice mayor Waring, councilman DeCiccio, that is correct. What Mr. Clark was referring to, and what you were referring to as well, that was a, and is a tool used by our Homeland Defense Bureau, this is not that same tool.
Right.
This tool is specific to felony criminal investigations for a specific express purpose.
I would like to have the opportunity to vote on the other tool, we're, we're filming and videotaping people doing, eating hot dogs, having a beer, yes, I have a beer, I'm, I'm, I probably wouldn't get confirmed anything, because I, I do have a beer, I'll have a couple beers, and yes, in college, I had them, I had beers in college, too. And I, you know, it is what it is.
Stop while you're ahead.
No, it's okay, I am, I'm not worried about it, I'm term limited, remember? But at the end of the day, I would like to be able to vote on the filming of citizens doing normal things at either football games, and I also believe that people have a right to protest without having the government infringe on their rights and their ability to protest, because I think it limits free speech there, too. But I'd like to know when that will come up for a vote, mayor. I, I really think that that needs to come up, and I think the public needs to be aware of what the city of Phoenix has been doing to them at football games. I, I have a real issue with that, ASU football games, think about it, you're being videotaped by the city of Phoenix, you're being videotaped. Think about that. Everything you're doing at these football games is being videotaped, and I guessing that it's occurring at some of the baseball games and other sporting events, there's no reason for us to be there and doing this stuff.
I'm looking forward to Sal doing an interview with Fox News to discuss his robust personal life, this is exciting stuff, something to look forward to for me later.
Like I said, I probably wouldn't be confirmed anything at this point.
I'll catch the replay when I'm at the gym in the morning, it'll be fantastic.
But I'd like that to come up, city manager. I'd like to, I'd like to have us have a public discussion on that and a vote, and I'd really like us to do that, because I think as civil libertarians as a whole, we have, we should let the public know what's happening out there, too. And there's no reason to be doing some of this stuff, none.
I have a question.
Yes.
We're videotaping at an ASU game that is played in Tempe?
Councilwoman Pastor, I don't want to confuse issues, so I want to make sure that I address that. What I believe councilman DeCiccio was referring to is our Strongwatch vehicle, which can be loaned out to other entities as part of our homeland collaboration for, again, a specific purpose, that's, it's intent.
Got it.
And it's our guys in the car, because I've asked them, I stopped them and asked them about that. I don't think I had a beer in my hand, but I could have, you know?
Okay.
Okay, everybody good?
Yep.
All right, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring.
Yes, passes seven, nothing, next item fifty-nine.
Move item fifty-nine.
We have any cards?
Okay.
Only if necessary. Okay. Any council discussion? No discussion? All right, you guys are unusually quiet. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring.
No. Passes five to two, next item, number sixty.
Item number sixty, move item number sixty.
Thank you, any cards? Nope. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio. Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring.
No, passes five to two, item sixty-one.
Item sixty-one. I'm sorry? Yes. Second. All right, I was looking at my item.
Any cards? Any discussion? Sal?
No, mayor, and there's really no reason to have a discussion on this, I think we've been very clear, we're gonna be spending a million dollars plus on another study. It'd be better off we spent that money, and this is a bus study, just improving the routes, we know where they are, this is a total CYA expenditure, so that city staff can say, hey, we did this study, when in fact that all we need to do is, if you're gonna be expanding routes, looking at routes, we know where the population is, we know where the bus ridership is, we know where the transit riders are. Spend the money over there, spend it on the public instead of these worthless studies that sit on a desk and, that are provided basically as a CYA of some type for city officials. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, any other comments?
I have a comment. I don't know who's here.
Are you looking for Mario?
Yeah.
He is here. Other guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, my question is, and I asked this at earlier when I continued this item, my question is, I saw in the packet that we do have a scope of work for the prime contractors, and it's broken down. That...
Councilwoman Pastor, yes, that's correct.
And my understanding is, one of the reasons why, I guess we would say a study is happening is that the CTC asked for, the request from the CTC was to go back out and make sure that those bus rapid transit routes were accurate and were still in need from when it was previously done.
Yes, mayor and councilwoman Pastor, the bus rapid transit is a, is a new form of transit that's proposed for the city of Phoenix. We don't currently have bus rapid transit in, in place right now, and so, but on the T-2050 ballot, bus rapid transit was proposed to be implemented, and so this planning work, this consultant work to develop a plan, to engage the community in discussions about what bus rapid transit could be, is what we're talking about today. The Citizens Transportation Commission, you're exactly right, did request that additional work and analysis be done to look at what corridors make the most sense for the city of Phoenix. There were some corridors that were identified on the ballot for Proposition 104, but the CTC recognizes that there have been some changes since the, the ballot's been approved, and it makes sense to look, to take a look at, a fresh look at those corridors, and so that's part of the work that the consultant will be doing.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you, anymore? Seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No. Passes five to two. Uh, next is item sixty-four as corrected.
I'd like to move item sixty-four as corrected. Second.
Thank you, Leonard Clark. Leonard, leave. Hope you're having a safe trip home, any further discussion? Members? No more from the public? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Uh, yes, no, excuse me, uh, yes, yes, I'll vote yes. Sorry, guys. Passes seven to nothing?
Six one.
Six one. Uh, thank you.
Are you positive on the vote?
Let's see.
Do we need to reconsider?
I think I'm okay, six one.
Okay.
Uh, next, number sixty-six.
Would like to move item sixty-six.
And I will second.
All right, any cards? Nope. Sixty-six?
Sixty-six.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
DeCiccio. Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Uh, yes, this is a complete streets, right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Uh, no. Passes five to two.
Well, I wanted to say yes.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Yes. I worked on it all summer long, so yes.
Then a double no for me, five to two. Passes five to two. Okay, moving on to item eighty-six.
I'd like to move item eighty-six.
We have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Alan, is there a presentation? I think we have a card that they want to do a presentation as well.
Mayor, members of council, item eighty-six is a citizen petition related to 4418 East Osborne Road. I believe there is a resident who has a PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Wally Graham, and the property owner has also retained the services of Mr. Ed Bull, and he also has a presentation on this item as well. Staff has one that can provide an overview as well. Mayor, members of council, this is concerned, a citizen petition regarding an alley at 4418 East Osborne Road. You see it outlined here in red. This is 44th Street, here's Osborne Road. This is a Circle K on the immediate corner, and this is the subject of a adaptive reuse project to put in a vintage market and coffee shop. The citizen petition deals with the granting of the use of alley for access to the rear for parking area that historically has been on this parcel. As part of this citizen petition, staff does not recommend that there be any follow-up action taken on this item. You can see that Chesley Manor was the parcel that dedicated, plat that dedicated this area, created the single-family neighborhood behind, as well as the commercial parcels that were zoned C1 at that time. The zoning has not changed since that time in 1951. The red circles you see are blown up here, and it shows you that there are 20-foot-wide alleys, which is a commercial standard for a 20-foot-wide alley versus the 16-foot-wide alley, which is your standard between residential and residential. And that's because during that time period, the city allowed for commercial access to be used for customer parking in the rear, as well as vehicle and trash pickup, all those things with commercial vehicles happen from the rear. If you think about older parts of the city that were developing in this time period, such as along Indian School Road, along Thomas, along Seventh Street, Seventh Avenue, you have this similar condition on numerous parcels where in fact you have, the alley is what's used and the building is up front, and the alley is how you get to the parking on a number of those instances. This one is very similar. Here's a 1961 aerial photograph that shows cars parked in the back. Here's the building at the time. 1964, similar. Here's the building right here. There always was a parking lot up front, but there was also parking in the rear as well. The public, the dedicated alley with that 20-foot was where their legal access came through at that time. 1969, the same, you still, more parking back here as well. 1971, the same, more parking in the rear. This is the current photo showing again here today, just for discussion purposes. Again, as part of this citizen submittal process, staff did go back and look at the research on this issue again, and we did come to the same conclusion that this parcel does have legal access that predates any changes in ordinance that require now under current proposal, if this parcel did not have legal access dating back to this time period, it would require three of the four parcels to approve so that the driveway hearing officer can make a recommendation to allow that access to happen. But because this access predated that, it did not have to go through that process. And with that, staff's happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that trip down memory lane, Alan. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none. Okay, I was going to start with Wally Graham.
Um, listen, the votes will go first. I'd rather go ahead.
Ed, you look disconcerted, but you'd like to go first?
Okay.
Okay.
Position of everyone.
And Wally, we have another, Ben Moriarty. Is he also speaking, or is he donating time to you?
Sorry, I'm a little confused. I support staff.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering, because I was going to ask. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so Wal is the only one on the other side. Okay, Ed, why don't you go ahead and then let Wal respond.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Do I have a clicker? Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, representing KFH Vintage. Okay. I'm not advancing.
We've also given you a vintage clicker. Is it working?
KFA Vintage is made up really of three entrepreneurial families, the Kluzman family, the Holt family, and the Arnold family. Aaron Kluzman is here, Kevin Holt, and Lindsey Holt is here, Colleen Arnold is here. Real people who own this property that's zoned commercial, and they want to redevelop and repurpose this property for their vintage market and a coffee shop. The blue outlines the property that they own. As Alan indicated, this is the existing building. This yellow identifies a part of the alley that goes up and across to 44th Street. As Alan indicated, that is purposefully a 20-foot-wide commercial alley, whereas where it goes east is a 16-foot-wide residential alley. A vintage market is an indoor facility that shells a variety of what I would call artisan and curator supplies, some new, some antiques, some other collector items and so on. This is exactly the kind of use I think that the city's encouraged occur on infill redevelopment sites. I'm still not advancing. Okay. I have gone back and reviewed the historical information that Mr. Stevenson talked about, the 2016 information. I believe based upon the facts and the law that was presented, that your director made the right decision in 2016. I agree with that decision. I do believe that this alley is something that is a, use of this alley is a property right that goes to this particular abutting commercial property. I agree with the director's redetermination in 2018, as is set forth in staff's report to you, and as was summarized by your director today. This property owned by these folks that we represent has a right to continue using that alley, the same as they have a right to continue using Osborne Road. Conversely, we disagree with Mr. Graham's petition. As I said, this is a fundamental right. We do not believe that the city can properly take that pre-existing right away. We do not believe that the city should do it. We don't believe they can lawfully do it. And we also believe that Mr. Graham and his petition, where he's asking your council to appoint an arbitrator, is asking your council to reach up and grab authority that was not delegated to the city. We, I don't believe, and I'm not aware of any legal authority the city would have, to appoint an arbitrary arbitrator to arbitrate property rights, such as a fundamental right to access, or to have an arbitrator or my client to tear down a part of their building so that they could continue accessing their property. A suggested solution, it's hard to tell on here, that when Mr. Graham and I met, was either tear down the western few feet of the building in red, or the eastern few feet in green. I'm not suggesting either my red or green is to scale, but it's roughly 15 or feet or so off the west end or east end of this existing old building. The client estimates that would cost between a half a million and three-quarters of a million to tear part of it down and build it back with structural issues and so on. It has a ripple effect with lost rent, a ripple effect with lost value. That, I would suggest, is not how we should deal with an already zoned infill redevelopment property. Conclusion, we oppose this citizen petition. We ask that your council deny the petition. We don't believe that the council can or should grant the relief that's being asked. We request it be denied, and we will continue to go through the city's site plan review and other processes on this already zoned commercial infill property.
Thank you. We have a couple other cards on the, I guess you'd call it the Ed Bull side. Ben Moriarty, who we talked to, Matthew Richardson, Jack Di Bartolo III, all wish to speak. Did you wish to speak, or is it necessary? Nope, you're all good. Okay, and then Kevin Holt, Lindsey Holt, Colleen Arnold, and Aaron Kluzman filled out cards not wishing to speak. Okay?
I wish to speak.
You do wish to speak. Okay, and you're Ben, correct? Yes, please, come on up.
Mayor and Council, sorry for the confusion. Ben Moriarty, I'm a neighbor within the immediate neighborhood, pass by the site regularly. I agree with city staff's assessment of this issue, and I believe that in supporting the use of the alley for access should be supported by council for the following reasons: that it would support a small local business that's looking to make an adaptive reuse of this building that's been vacant for quite some time. They do a really good job of making old things new, and I trust they would make this site vibrant again. Not allowing the access in the alley could be more detrimental to the neighborhood because they would lose out on access to parking, and parking would then be spilled out into the adjoining neighborhood. And taking no further action would be a great sign of support for your professional staff who's given a great assessment of this issue. Thank you for your time, attention, and support in the neighborhood.
Thank you for coming down. Matthew Richardson?
Thank you very much for your time. I am in support of the vintage market, being able to open and use the full property. I've been a Phoenix resident for 40 years. I live in Arcadia. I am in a home 10 homes away from this property on Osborne. I own a local business that is less than a quarter of a mile on the corner of 44th Street and Indian School, very vibrant business, and support the community in a big way. Let me tell you a little bit about the property. As a business owner and as a local resident right next to the property, it's been vacant for many years, and it is a blight on the neighborhood. It is a challenging piece of land that will not be easy to develop. I'm assuming that's why it hasn't been bought and redeveloped easily. God bless the vintage market for wanting to do something with it. I've had to call the police over 10 times in the last year because it's become a haven for homeless and squatters, crime, and a lot of other issues, and I have multiple kids. When the neighbor, my neighbors, on this street found out that this was going to be developed, it was a godsend to us and an answer to prayer because right now that vacant lot that is challenging is bringing down everything, you know, is just bringing down the neighborhood. In Arcadia, we like things that are cool and hip, right? It's kind of a unique neighborhood that's family-friendly. This business is going to be a business that is just that. It is uniquely Arcadia. It's going to be focused on bringing people together, and I am super excited about being able to get a cup of coffee there any day of the week, so is my wife. I love and support the Osborne Neighborhood Association. I work with them frequently and plan to continue to do so. But I do not believe this is an overarching community issue. This is not the 56th Street project. This is not billboards on 44th Street. This is a local street access issue that does not affect the entire community on any level whatsoever. It affects me and my neighbors, or we are completely for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Wally Graham? I think you said you had a presentation, is that right? And they've got it loaded up and everything.
Wally Graham, 4331 East Weldon Avenue.
Before you start, how long is the presentation?
Beg pardon?
How long?
Five minutes, five minutes. I'm going to show a few slides, but let me give you a quick intro because this has been going on since 2016, and I am not opposed to development of this project. All of the speakers who spoke are talking about the pros and cons of development. I am petitioning because there was impropriety with regard to how the decisions were made. There are technical issues that have not been addressed, and they need to be addressed. So, the reason I have requested a review, an independent review, is that there was bias with regard to how this decision was made. One of the hearing officers, Mr. De Paro, in June 2016, made a decision on the alley review, and in that review, he said the alley could be converted into a access point. He also said that the four neighbors who are adjacent to the alley on 44th Place are the people who should finally approve or vote on that alley access. That was overturned by Mr. Alan Stevenson in October after an eight-day look at the, at a input from an attorney who was at the time an employee of Mr. Stevenson's. I think that's inappropriate. This person was an employee of Mr. Stevenson's at the time the decision was made. I brought that to Mr. Stevenson's attention more than once, to Mr. Pinagua's attention and to others. That was inappropriate. So, why I am here is not about the right or wrong or the good or bad. I think it's good that that property be developed. I am here because I think you need to review processes. A second part of this ineptness in this thing is one of the pieces of input that was given by an attorney who petitioned to have this thing, the alley used, he showed a 1962 photo that showed there were fences on the lot. The photo he showed was actually the lot lines. They were not fences. And Mr. Stevenson and his crew took those, that input as, oh, the lot already had fences. That lot was wide open, and I will show you a picture of what it looked like in 19...I won't walk through all of those, but those are some of my problems with this whole thing. Let me see if I can move this forward. Shoot. There we go. This is a 1976 photo. There are multiple ways to access that lot. If you see in 1976, there were six vehicles. We don't know whether those were abandoned because the owner of that property at the time collected old cars. We don't know whether those were abandoned cars or not, but you could in fact drive across that lot from the west to get to the rear of that property, okay? I've pointed that out to them multiple times. The 1962 photo was then converted to a 1964 photo by somebody in Mr. Stevenson's department to support their not having to go back and say they were wrong. I'm simply trying to improve the process. This is not fair to neighbors. There's a conflict of interests. It doesn't smell right. It doesn't look right, and it's not fair. So, I'm simply asking the owners to look at other options, other alternatives. This is the lot. As you can see, one of the newer neighbors, a lot of people have moved in there in the last 20 years, who, this lot has been empty for 20 years. The back of that lot didn't have anybody behind it. The building was occupied up until five years ago by a doctor and some other people. But these folks who built those houses and remodeled houses came in there not knowing that they had this commercial alley access, and I'm going to go to my last, if I can move this thing. If you look at that, that's a 1981 photo, back of the alley, empty. Here is what this, this was a pizzeria Bianco was trying to do, and this, they have essentially taken the same architect and revised his drawing a little bit, and they still want to put these two driveways in. So, folks, I'm here about impropriety. This was not done appropriately. Mr. Stevenson should not have been involved, nor should his staff, because the person who petitioned for this and was granted as the lawyer was an employee at the time, had been an employee before. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan, what are our options here?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, in this case, the options are to accept the petition and the things that Mr. Graham has outlined, or reject the petition. Staff does recommend that you reject the petition, and I could address some of the allegations about an employee making decisions. Mr. Allison was never an employee during that time period of the City of Phoenix. He was a volunteer zoning adjustment hearing officer. So, during the downturn, the department had to cut funds, just like everything else. And at that time, Councilwoman Stark was the director. One of the items that she implemented was to ask real estate attorneys, zoning attorneys, others who were familiar with real estate and development law, to volunteer to be zoning adjustment hearing officers and hear cases like variances and use permits, because prior to that time period, we were paying staff. We were paying outside contract employees to do it. And so, what happened as part of that was we did have volunteers who were doing hearing officer duties at that time. Mr. Allison was one of those folks who was doing those duties. Since that time and over the last several years, the department had been transitioning away from that, and we now have gone to a full process where we have outside zoning adjustment hearing officers that are employed and paid by the city. Mr. Allison is not one of those folks. So, there was no impropriety in doing that. He, whenever he did his volunteer duties as a hearing officer, he would declare a conflict if any of the matters were before him that had anything to do with his law firm, but he was strictly a volunteer, just like every other volunteer who works for the city at that time.
Since we have a binary choice, do we have to vote, or...
Vice Mayor, members of the council, I believe it...
So, Vice Mayor, members of the council, you could choose to take no action.
And I think, in my humble opinion, we shouldn't. I think Alan did the appropriate thing. If I came in tomorrow with a building permit request, what are you going to do? You're going to process it? Even though I'm a councilwoman, you still have to process it. You are doing your job. You are doing your job. You did it correctly. Thank you.
Mayor? I like saying it, mayor Waring, conservative, what the heck, you know?
My minority opinion, Sal, but I appreciate that. Thirst.
Well, I appreciate all the enthusiasm and the work that you have in the neighborhood, but this is wrong. I mean, at the end of the day, we've worked on this case since, I think it was before 2016, when we tried to get the pizzeria Bianco on this thing, and they just got frustrated and left. This thing has been vacant. It's a transient location. If we can't redevelop something as simple and small as this, we're never going to get anything done in the city of Phoenix. We're never going to see a redevelopment. We're never going to see an adaptive reuse type of project. So I appreciate all the work that you've done. But why do they need to? They don't need to look, and I understand, cutting off one side of the building. I don't think that they, I'm going to tell you right now, Wally, and I've had this discussion before, they don't need to do that, and they shouldn't have to look at options. It's their land. It's their property. I'm fine with what they're doing. I am. I'm totally fine with it. I, you know, I mean, I'm very direct, and at the end of the day, if we can't get something like this done, why do we do anything here at the city? I mean, this is not a big project. It's a redevelopment project. We had a similar case like this happen in Arcadia between property owners. We made the same type of ruling then. I had to make that decision, and it's not easy making these kinds of decisions. I'm going to let the public know. These things are not easy. They're difficult because I know people on both sides, and I understand things, but at the end of the day, they should not have to look at other options. They shouldn't have to. I think that they have a legal right to that alleyway. We made that determination even back in 2016, I believe it was 2017. We've looked at everything. We've evaluated this thing. It's time to get it done. So I'm going to not be supporting your petition, Wally. I respect everything that you do. I really do. I mean, we don't always agree, and sometimes we do, but at the end of the day, this just needs to get done, and it just needs to get off our plate and get this thing developed. It's just an eyesore in that neighborhood, and I'd like to see it get done and reject this petition. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor from the Spring Pastore, do you have something else to say?
In my motion, my motion was to deny. I'll reject their request. And so I just needed to add clarity to that. The other reason, the reason in looking at this, and I sat down with Alan for quite some time and asked 21 questions, as I always do, but the fact that it's been a use, it's been an area where that has been shared by neighbors and commercial for quite a long time, and in driving near the area or by the area, I now understand where it's at in the sense of, I know that area quite well. And so it is a blighted area. It's a, sometimes we have to take some tough votes in the sense of reactivating space and making it sure, making it, getting it back to the point where it needs to get to. So that was my motion.
Thank you. Much as I'd love to talk to us about this some more, we're not going to. Roll call.
The CCO. Give our...
Yeah, to deny.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Waring.
Yes. So the motion to deny passes seven to nothing. Before you guys scurry off, we have two cards. People want to speak. So Reverend Zachary Morgan?
Marissa? Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Zach Morgan, and I'm with Apology Church, and I just am honored to be here standing before you today. I'm a servant of King Jesus Christ, a husband of my lovely wife, father of six, and a very concerned citizen before you. I'm honored and humbled to stand before you today and come to you with a heart full of love, urgency, and resolve. I know that at the end of these three short minutes, you're going to be challenged, convicted, and maybe even angry with me, but know that I'm commanded by God, your God, to love my neighbors and you, all are very important and integral neighbors. Therefore, these words I have for you are for your good, the good of our city and our nation. The topic I'm bringing to your attention is a subject that we're all aware of, but don't give the attention and priority that it's definitely worthy of. This is not a trivial subject. This is of grave importance and needing immediate attention from us all. This is incredibly pertinent primarily because it's important to my God and your God, the God and judge of all of us who we'll stand before and give an account of on our day of judgment. Listen very carefully to me in these next moments. 1,200 preborn developing human beings are systematically murdered every single month, just in our state alone. That's roughly 40 defenseless humans executed every single day. Abortion is the premeditated murder of human babies with malice aforethought. The shedding of innocent blood is bringing compounded calamity upon our nation. Our Lord and God hates abortion. This is not my opinion. Listen to God's word. There are six things that the Lord hates, seven that are an abomination to Him: haughty eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that shed innocent blood. Our God commands us not to murder. The killing of an innocent baby in the womb is murder in the eyes of God. And like I said, the shedding of innocent blood is bringing nothing but disastrous consequences that we've been dealing with for decades. Since Roe v. Wade, 60 million human beings have been executed, future men and future women dead. Mothers bringing these babies to an abortion clinic to pay for them to be dismembered or chemically killed is a wickedness with no parallel. This must stop now. You all play a very crucial role in the governance of our city and presently have a delegated position of authority by God. You must wake up. You must come to your senses. You must act on behalf of the most oppressed people group on this earth. Your primary duty is to protect our city's inhabitants. AZ Statute 13-3603, I would beg you to look that up, says that abortion is illegal in our state and punishable by law. With all the love and respect I can give to you, do your duty. Do your duty and uphold this law. Look what God commands you in His word. Rescue those who are being taken away to death. Hold back those who are stumbling towards the slaughter. That's our duty. We have to act according to this most important priority now. And I want to encourage all the residents that you can get involved at endabortionnow.com and join us in this most important fight. As I said, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Wally Graham?
Related to the petition process, I'd like to recommend that there be some improvements in how we are informed. I was not informed on October 3rd. This was supposed to be heard on October 3rd. I was not previously informed. The owner of the property had been told two days before, and the reason I know that is he sent a note to the neighbor. I'm the petitioner. I was not informed, nor did I see Mr. Pinagua's report to you all. I think petitioners ought to have some information prior to the day of the meeting, to be told when the meeting will be held, just to confirm, and petitioners ought to be told where you're going to be on the agenda so you know how to deal with your date. So I'm just making a petition improvement suggestion. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. See if staff can get with Wally and work that out, because we continued this once already, and I thought it was because he was going to be out of town.
Vice Mayor, yes, this was continued, but we'll review our processes about notification of petitioners. That's a good suggestion.
Thank you. All right. Meeting adjourned.